John, can you mute yourself if possible?
May I mute myself?
Yeah, just so you don't, we don't hear a bunch of background noise because you've got a bunch of background noise coming through.
There's so many people in this building right now.
Okay, well mute yourself.
Yeah.
Please.
A special meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In the letter to the Commissioners dated June 6, 2025, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a special meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, June 10, 2025, at five, I'm sorry, 8:00 AM in the boardroom of the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presroki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of the citizens of Delta County. And Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women and our first responders. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Melner. Attending by DFO.
Attending by phone, excused.
Yep. Okay. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Van Genhoven.
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Thank you Nancy, and thank you for everyone coming and watching on YouTube. Special orders of business, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, there are none. Approval of the agenda?
So, is there any way we can go into closed session? I know we have our contract, it's out, it's in the board packet. We don't have our maximums of what we're willing to negotiate yet. Or, nor do we really, I mean, we have our minimums, but we don't really have our maximums of how high we're willing to go on some of these items. I would rather discuss it, since it is a contract issue, in closed session, just so we don't give the other person in the contract the advantage of hearing what our maximums are.
Well, didn't we set a range?
We did set a range for a price, but not for things like vacation, for, well, basically vacation. There are items in here that we have not set a range for yet.
So you're talking about on the benefit side, not on the salary side?
Right, on the salary side.
To be more clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Are we able to go into closed session for that?
It is a contract issue.
Yep.
Taking approval of the agenda?
And I would say we go into closed session, I mean, it'd be item number one.
And the, and the reason to go into closed session again is because you don't want to provide an advantage to the person that we would be negotiating with to know what those amounts or benefits might be.
Correct.
Okay.
You have a motion on the floor, correct?
Correct.
Do we have support?
All support.
So, we have point of order in our rules of procedure. Sorry, OMA. It, it only allows you to go into closed session for collective bargaining.
Negotiations.
Not for, not for contract?
Yeah. Or written opinion of a, of an attorney.
I'm trying to think how we were able to do it in the past.
Maybe you violated the OMA.
Maybe.
Or you did it separate in committee.
Still, it was open meeting. Okay. Sorry, that was just, that was just brainstorming.
Yeah.
Will you resend your motion?
I will send my motion.
I'll resend my citation.
And I will make a motion to approve the agenda as approved.
All support. Presented. All support.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Johnson, a support by Commissioner Jensen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We have no presentation of written communications, we have no reports of standing statutory special committees or others. Public comment on agenda items. We have Mr. Robert Baron, Eskenaba Township. Good morning.
Good morning. Board of Commissioners, as has been said, this is Bob Baron. As a citizen of Delta County, I strive personally for high ethical and moral standards. For the Board to continue with contract negotiations with DeSalvo is to tell the citizens of Delta County that this Board's ethics and professionalism are the same as DeSalvo's. You have the example of high ethics and professional professionalism in your current administrator. My understanding is Ashley contacted the Board members to inform them of her desire to apply for the airport manager position and seek their approval to apply. DeSalvo, with the help of John Mulliner, deliberately blindsided the Board after applying for a secured position elsewhere in order to be fired and walk away with a severance of approximately fifty to seventy thousand dollars. Ashley has a very similar contract and has ethically and professionally resigned to move into her new position. All this without fleecing the Delta County taxpayers of a severance. To bring DeSalvo back is to condone this unethical and unprofessional behavior and to deja vu, give DeSalvo the opportunity to fleece the county taxpayers again. The Board is only, the Board's only ethical option is to start over the search for an administrator that is ethical and professional. Joy is the perfect fulfillment of that for which I was created and regenerated in not successful doing of a thing. It's a quote from Oswald Chambers. The, DeSalvo is not going to bring well-being on his Board. From the Bible, Ecclesiastes, Chapter 12, Verses 13 and 14, written by King Solomon, the wisest man to ever live. Let us hear the conclusion to the whole matter. Fear God and keep His commandments, for this is the whole duty of man. For God shall bring every work into judgment with every secret thing, whether it be good or evil. What you're doing is not wise. And to understand wisdom, wisdom, the fear of the Lord is the instruction of wisdom. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other public comment on agenda items? Any other comment? We're just going to hold for Commissioner Williams to check for the phone. That's okay.
This is too early for me.
I understand.
Okay. There is none.
Okay, so last call on public comment on agenda items? Okay, seeing no further, we'll move on. General orders of business, unfinished business, there is none. New business, number one, approval of draft administrator's contract. Which we all have in front of us in a paper copy, and it was also on our next cloud and included in the board packet for the public. Who would like to lead us off?
I would like to make a suggestion. I would like to suggest that we handle the, the changes to the contract in two parts. One, that we handle what the Personnel Committee did first, and then we look at what the Finance Committee did so that we kind of keep the two separate. If that's, if that's okay with everybody, but to me, to go through it, we could go through it as a whole, which is fine, but I think it would be important to point out which committee made the changes. Just to be clear.
Okay.
So it's up to, up to you guys how we want to proceed, but I was thinking if we, if we go through it as a whole, we just need to identify where those changes were made.
Does everybody have a copy in front of them from the Personnel changes? Otherwise, I can email it to you really quickly?
In your board packet on page four.
Okay.
You'll see a document, red font with yellow highlights was Personnel's recommendations. Purple font with blue highlights was Finance recommendations. There was one item in Section 4 where Personnel had recommended a salary amount and Finance, and you'll see that blue
Thank you, Ashley.
has recommended, so all, and then the original is also there.
So everything's all there?
Everything's there.
Thank you.
And I tried. And then Commissioner Williams has the one that she passed out an email to all of us last night. Those have some other types of changes in there.
Okay, so like format changes?
That she has suggested more.
Format?
Yeah.
And there's a couple of things that are significant changes in the contract wording wise, but yeah.
Okay, so I think just for thoroughness sake and everything, we should just go through it page by page if everybody is okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So page one was simply striking names in description, job description, and inserting the proper names.
And are we just doing Personnel right now then? Or are we doing it as a whole? Because if we're doing it as a whole, there's a change.
Okay.
It might be best if we just do it as a whole.
I'm going to suggest that you lead this, please.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. But I would like to ask whether or not our intent is to motion and support and vote on each change as we go? Or are we doing it as a whole?
I would, I would prefer section by section.
Okay.
Part by part.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in addition to the changes to dates and name of, and position type, uh, job description position, the third whereas clause, the Finance Committee had talked about this word assure, and basically it said that we would assure the employee's morale and peace of mind for future security, and that to me seemed unattainable. We can't assure anyone's peace of mind, we cannot assure anyone's morale. But what we can do is we can, this is the wording that I suggest we change it to, is we can provide the employee with mutually agreed upon expectations to foster a peace of mind and foster future security, but we cannot assure that. So that was the change there.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, it's pretty good.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, and then in number two of that whereas clause, it said, "It was confusing, I felt the language was just a little bit confusing." I think what it's trying to say is that the employer is being protected against acts of malfeasance or dishonesty or personal gain on the part of the employee. I didn't understand the way it was written, using the terms as a deterrent against. I, this contract isn't, I mean, it is a deterrent against, but I felt that it would just be easier to read if it just said, "Provide the employer protections against acts of malfeasance." So just cleaning up that language a little bit. That was all. So it doesn't change, it doesn't change the meaning of the whereas clause, it's just clarifying it, I think, and making it easier for people to read.
Okay.
Okay. So that's page one.
Okay, so do we want a motion to approve page one as amended?
So moved. All support.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, yeah, all support.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, support by Commissioner Jensen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to page two? Oh, I'm sorry, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to page two?
Uh, page two, again, at the beginning, we have dates that change. And we have references to sections and paragraphs, which will need to change based on the final version of this. So what I would suggest is that we approve whatever references to the different sections. Those can change depending on the final outcome of this, but there are those changes that will have to happen. So that's the first part of it. In Section C, so it's Section 2C, the sixty day, it says, "The Board shall provide not less than sixty days, sixty day notice." It says that the contract will not be renewed, and I said if the contract would not be renewed. So it's just changing the word that to if, not it, if.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. And then in Section 3A, last sentence, it says, uh, number, it's like, it says, "At least three commissioners of five, of a five-member board and become effective the date said board specifies." The word and, it's, uh, what am I trying to say? No comma.
No comma.
Yeah, no comma, so it's just a grammatical change there. Just to be consistent throughout the document. And, and, and I think there was conversation about that?
Yep.
Is there?
Yep.
Is there any further conversation about that?
In person, Commissioner Johnson and I felt that a supermajority would be effective, four out of five, given the changes with severance and, and other items. But we decided to keep it at three.
Okay.
And see where we go in negotiations.
Okay.
Yep.
The, uh, Section B, so Section 3, Section B, let's see, we had, so that's where the severance package is. And originally, it had read, "Insurance benefits for three months and six months' salary." And that has been changed to one month, insurance benefits for one month and pay a lump sum severance. The word severance was added. And the reason that's added is because it comes back later in the contract. That's the only reason. The lump sum severance of seven thousand five hundred dollars to the employee. So that's one change, so we should probably work on that first before we go on to the next part of it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Mm-hmm.
So that changed from six months' salary to seven thousand five hundred and from
Three months' insurance.
Three months to one month of insurance benefits. Okay. So we're all okay with that?
I am.
Okay. The second part is, and this I added personally, I did not, this is not the finance. So I just want to make that clear. Furthermore, the employee agrees to pay back, reimburse the County of Delta the full seven thousand five hundred severance if the employee is hired back, it should say within the hired back, within, hired back into the county, or as county employee, within three years of the date of separation that resulted in the severance pay. So this is considered like a clawback clause or a payback clause, and there are many ways that this can be done, I just wanted this to be simple and address if the employee were to come back, that you can't get hired, leave, get hired, leave, get hired, leave, and be paid severance packages for that, so.
So with the severance, this would be only upon being fired, correct?
Correct.
Now, if she were, or well, if our, if this position was fired, and another department wanted to hire that individual, like, let's say, kind of our situation we're in with our current administrator, where she's in her position, but let's say she got fired and then the airport hired. Would that be considered hired by the county, or are we just talking about similar position?
That's a good question. So we could agree that it could be within the county, any position within the county, or the exact same position.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Yeah, it is a good point, because if you go from, let's say, being one of the top earners, and then within three years, you say, hey, I want to give this another shot, and then you come back as one of the bottom earners. Also, if you're going from non-union to union, I'm just wondering, how do we make, and how do we make someone do that? I mean...
Well, I would be okay with adding in, into the same position. So, you know, so that it's more clear.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Adding, so that you would be, basically, it's the scenario that exists right now.
I guess one of the parts that we're missing in there, it's not just a matter of you were here, you left on your own accord, you decided to come back. You were terminated.
Right, that's, exactly.
So if you were terminated, I think that should apply countywide, because you were terminated, there's obviously a reason why you were terminated.
Right, you can only get the severance if you're terminated, so.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, I would say that, let's say, you hired me for IT, I would get fired. But yet, you wanted me for a different position, where I'm more suited for that position. Well, then, like, I, clearly during our interview process, when I said I was great at IT, you guys didn't do your background check, I made myself look cooler than what I was. And then, but I was really good at, I have no idea. Running my mouth, I don't know. So I became a lawyer, or I became a clerk, or I, I don't know, something, just, I became
Dig yourself out of the hole.
Exactly. I became, I became
Dig yourself out of this hole right now.
I became better at my, at a different job.
Yeah.
And somebody realized that and said, hey, you're terrible at IT, but you're better at a different job. So I get hired, and then, I mean, that's just...
This is very, I think this clause is very specific to the administrator role.
But it is precedent setting.
I know.
Yep.
I know.
And it, and it should be in contracts where we pay out severances. So, there are ways to do this, if you have very large severances like we had before, where you pay it over a period of time, and if someone gets paid back, that, it stops, you know, or, or you pay back. I mean, there's lots of ways to do this, but my intent is to, is to make sure that if someone is term, and we could add the language terminated for some, you know, like criminal or what, I don't know, whatever, that just cause, yeah. If you're terminated for just cause, you, you don't get to, you know, get this, get this severance package and then come back.
Well, you don't get the severance for just cause, termination anyways.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarification, that is true.
So, okay, so we had decided that we were going to put this in with, what, there was an addendum to it, what was, what was the addendum?
I, I just was suggesting, if we want to go with what you're saying, is into the same position.
Into the same position.
Or, what
Comparable.
Matt was arguing is that it could be countywide, and I, I would like to have the conversation, like which one?
One of those, I think, if you were, if you were, use this as a perfect example, if you're looking at the, the top position basically in the county for that, as an executive, the chances you taking another position at one of the entry level positions then in the county within three years, I would think, just based off that, would be probably pretty negligible. For a whole lot of reasons, but in one of the other management positions that are there, department heads and throughout, you know, that would be a possibility, and I don't think that they
Yes, I mean, if you're, if you're fired, you know, let's say, you know, it's just, it's not for just cause, you're just fired. And do you have the right to come back to, and you get paid out seventy-five hundred dollars? Do you have the right to come back in a year in another position and, and, and not have to pay that severance? That, that's just what I'm asking.
Well, let's just give a scenario that, you know, we reach hard times and
We, we what?
That the county comes into hard times financially.
Oh, hard times, okay.
And we have to fire some of our personnel, right? And then, within three years, we're able to bounce back, and we want to rehire them. We have to, we have to make them pay back that severance?
You wouldn't be firing them, though, you'd be laying them off.
Yeah.
So that's actually different.
We'd be reduction of force, which would be not firing.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
I would say, it would, it would be my recommendation that it's only, uh, title to title. So, if the administrator is fired, and within three years, they're allotted to come back as the admin, or rehired as the administrator, they have to do the clawback. Otherwise, I would say let it, let it go. That, that's me.
I would agree.
What do you feel, Christine?
Uh, I'm, I have some mixed, mixed responses. I think that because we've lowered the severance significantly, which I think is, is, uh, is very good, that, and I appreciate the Personnel Committee doing that, that in this particular instance, I would be okay with having the title, you know, coming back into the same position, but I would suggest that any contract that we do moving forward that has any sort of severance package in it has this kind of ability built into it, so that it is, you know, we're not allowing, uh, a severance payout that, that Yeah.
David, agree.
Matt?
I still think it should be within any, any of those management positions, but
Oh, so you're suggesting not any position, but you're suggesting
Well, the likelihood of someone coming back if they're at one of those top spots back to an entry level, I think is pretty negligible just based on where they would be at in their life and in their professional career, that they would come back at, you know, literally an entry level job there. But definitely not any of the management positions.
I, the only thing, I mean, we have precedent with what our former administrator did, was when she was fired, she came back, and I can't remember what her job
It was in the
It was in the district court, but then I can't remember, yeah. What, so it was, it was contract, but that's, that's not really an entry level position either, is it?
No, but on the same token, they're not one of our employees, they're the court's employees. We just do, we just facilitate it. So it's not, even though the courts here in the county, it's a, it's a state court, we just, we're the facilitator for it.
And that would be okay?
It's, it wouldn't fall within our purview because we don't have anything to do with our personnel. Policies don't, won't apply, that's within the courts.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of ifs and ands with this, with this section. I would say in order to move on, if we could say, you know, position to position, administrator to administrator.
Otherwise, we're going to end up being a two-two vote, and it's going to die, so then we're not going to have it in there, so.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
The intention with this, this is our only position that I'm aware of that has a severance
It is, okay. That's good to know.
Just because you said for future contracts.
Yeah. There's no other
We just like paid leave.
Okay.
That is earned and approved, so.
Okay.
But Commissioner Johnson made a good point, this is, this is now precedent setting that we didn't have before. So if we look at, and just say future, if we look at a director for, I don't care, the airport, for example, that, that's been one of those that's out there. That, that's a substantially increased in executive type position. Something like this would
This may be in there.
Yeah, this may very well be in there, just because of where that ranges, so. That's the other thing I think we need to keep in mind, being it is setting a precedent.
Okay, so to move on, is there, would we have at this point a two-two vote if we were to say within the county?
I'm only willing to go job position to job position.
And what about you, Patrick?
Yeah, I, because there's institutional knowledge that could be there, and if you're close to retirement, you're like, yeah, I'm close to retirement, you guys kind of feel it, I'm, I'm kind of slow quitting, or what do they call it, quiet quitting? And all of a sudden, and I get, I get fired, and then I'm like, well, I'm going to take that entry level job because retired guys love taking, like, jobs that they've always wanted to do, but they didn't have the means to support that job. So then you take a job at, teaching something, or like, maybe you wanted to, I mean, going from the administrator to helping kids with parole or something. There's, there's levels that you can take where you've always wanted to do the job, but you knew the pay wasn't there, so you want to take that job. Does that make sense?
Not really, but I understand where you're going.
No.
Well, so, I'm going to, I'm going to use, I'm going to use my dad as an example. My dad had his professional job, and now he's retired, but he teaches pistol classes.
But he wasn't fired?
No, but let's say he's, let's say he silent quit, or, and then got fired for that. Where he was close to the age of retirement, silent quit, somebody saw it and said, no, we're not going to let you just ride it out, we're fired now.
And then he wouldn't be able to come back and
Then he wouldn't be able to come back and do the, the class, or the teach, do the thing that he always wanted to do, but never had the pay to do it.
So, based on what you're saying, I'm assuming that you would not be okay if it said within the county?
Correct.
Okay. So in order for this to be incorporated and be a part of this contract, I will, uh, I will be okay with adding into the same position so that we can move forward and, and put this in there. so that we can move forward and, and put this in there.
What if you, um, said supervisory role?
Into the same position.
I'd be okay with that.
Into supervisory role?
Just to specify what Commissioner Jensen was saying, so it's not countywide if somebody wants to come back for a clerical position or such, or entry level position, um, but a supervisory and management style role, just listening.
Okay.
I think that's a good compromise.
Yeah, okay, that's, okay, then we'll compromise, okay. So then it would say furthermore, the employee agrees to pay back, reimburse the county of Delta the full seventy-five hundred severance if the employee is hired back into.
A supervisory.
Into a supervisory role. Within three years of the date of separation, uh, that resulted in the severance pay, is that okay?
Fine with me.
Thank you very much for everyone, uh, debating that and getting that in there, so. Okay, uh, let's see, so the next was the elimination of item C, um, which is, uh, in the event that the contract is not renewed by the board and during such time the employee is capable of reforming, la, la, oh, that, we already did that, that's the three months, it's six months, okay. So then the next section had a whole, it basically says, in the event the employee is terminated for just cause, the employer, you know, shall have no obligation to pay the severance sum designated, which, you know, is just cause, would be criminal activity, that sort of thing. We had this big list, um.
Right, and, and just so you're aware, the discussions in personnel were, uh, quite interesting because, um, what I had asked of our clerk and our administrator was, you know, who put these in? Because when we looked at, you know, contract to contract to contract, there was a lot more in this contract than there was, um, in prior contracts as far as explaining everything out. And it was hard to determine if that was done at the last Personnel Committee when they hired Administrator Young, if that was done by our legal counsel, the prosecuting attorney. Um, and so, did we ever find out for this section if this was done as a personnel or if this was done as legal? We did not find that out.
Madam Chair, I have a point of order, we were, had previously voted, we had motions and stuff to approve changes. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we're on page.
This one splits, right, this one splits, that's why I'm asking.
Very good point.
If we wanna do that to stay with how our flow and our rules had been, if we set that.
We're just doing pages, approving by pages, yeah.
Yeah, he's just saying that the pages, this section.
Carries over onto the next page.
The next page.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, the, I mean, the first page, we had section two terms on the first page, and then, yeah, okay. All right, so, um.
So we don't know where this list came from or why?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the items that are in there, those are all either something that's already legal by law.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, it's, it's definitely within for cause.
Yeah, I'm okay with striking.
I mean, yeah, if you, if you break the law, I, I just don't like this list. It's almost like, you know, you're kind of, uh, you're kinda get away with this if I do this over here.
Well, and then you have section C where it's, uh, on the next page, it says the parties agree that this is not limited to.
Yeah.
It's just redundant, so, um, with the striking of this, do we have a motion to accept page two as amended?
A move that we accept page two as amended.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jensen, support by Commissioner Williams, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, moving on to page three.
So obviously page three, the top part, uh, has to do with the just cause, so that's gone. Um, and then we had a section, an original section J, after such termination, all rights, duties, or obligations of both parties shall, that was stricken by, uh, personnel, I believe.
Yeah, G, H, and J were stricken by personnel.
Oh, yeah, okay. I don't have any problem with those.
Okay. And then, in letter D, it looks like it's just changing the letter.
Yeah, that's just the reference to, uh, the, the section in the, yeah.
Okay, so we're all okay with striking the G, H, and J?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to section four, salary.
So section, uh, for item B is the salary and the, um, and the evaluations and, uh, increases with those evaluations. So the Personnel Committee had come up, oh, sorry, the, uh, yeah.
Yep.
Personnel had come up with ninety-five thousand initially, and then a three thousand dollar bump after three months and a three thousand dollar bump after.
Six months.
Six months, and I think the total was one oh, one oh one.
Yep.
And, uh, the Finance Committee changed that to ninety-three initially and added the wording up to three thousand additional after six months from hire with a merit-based evaluation and recommendation by the board. So it added a lot of language there. Um, and then the, another three thousand additional after twelve months from the hire date with a second evaluation and recommendation of the board. And removed the total after six months. So the actual number that the salary changes to isn't in there because we're suggesting that it's up to three thousand based on what the merit evaluation would be.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and so that's a, a, a big change. Um, and then changing from three to six months and six months to twelve months was because, that was, um, guidance from our administrator saying, you know, being three months into the position, you're really not ready for, you know, a big evaluation and so. You're just, you're trying to get your feet on the ground, and I have been in that position too, where I've had to walk in to something that, um, was, you know, there's, there's stuff that's sort of behind, we've, we've, we've gotten behind on stuff, we need to really catch up. And giving that person more time is just a, um.
You're setting them up for success versus failure.
Well, it's setting them up for success, but also, um, just allowing a person to acclimate into that position again. Um, it would, I think, just be, I think, we thought that it would be be more beneficial to give some additional time. So, that's what those changes are.
So, with that, um, the first three months, the, typically you do that first three months because they are like learning the position, you're getting that knowledge. Are we saying our new administrator is going to be getting three thousand dollars worth of knowledge in those three months? Or are we hiring her because of her previous knowledge, and so is that three thousand dollars even necessary? Could we apply it more to the six month, or could we apply it more to the, like, if we did fifteen hundred bump in the beginning? What I'm saying is that three months typically is there because they're learning the role. Because of our situation, I don't feel she's really learning that role, um, because she's done the role.
Right, and I guess my response to that would be, um, this is a completely different board.
Okay.
And so there's a, I think there's going to be a different, um, it's gonna feel different than, than.
So we're doing the three months to, it's her acclimation to the board, and because she has to learn the board, that's worth the next three thousand dollars.
Thirty day evaluation, um, that we are supposed to give her so that we can set our goals.
And I think we changed that later on, is, I don't think it was thirty days, I think it was sixty days.
Regardless, um, we, we're going to be giving her, you know, that sixty day eval, where we can sit down and discuss what we feel she's doing well, what, what she needs to improve on, things of that nature.
Get changed to ninety.
Personally, I am not, um, I'm not okay with ninety-three, um, based on her experience and qualifications. Um, and I, I would like to, I'm okay with switching the, the increases from, you know, from three and six to six and twelve, but I would like to see the salary remain at ninety-five.
Well, I'm not willing to go above one hundred because that's what we set the range at. And so with your numbers, you ca, you went above what we had set the range at. And so if you wanted to start at ninety-five, then I would suggest that those, uh, two, uh, time periods in which you can, you know, go up to a certain amount based on your, uh, evaluation and recommendation by the board, that those be decreased. So that we do not exceed the range that we said we were going to stay within.
If we, what if we were to do, um, ninety-five starting and then twenty-five hundred and twenty-five hundred?
So there's something else in order to keep in mind, remember, we had changed how we did the evaluations within the last year. It's not, and that's something to keep in mind, it's not necessarily guaranteed twenty-five. So, and that's, and that's based off of the, the evaluation from the board, that's why it's one of those that's up two. So that's, it's not one of those when you're, when you're looking that this is, this is a hard number and this is gonna happen, doesn't mean that's gonna happen.
Evaluation and recommendation by the board.
Correct.
So, would everybody be okay with that?
So let me do quick math in my head here.
So I'd be willing to keep, uh, six and twelve, strike it down to twenty-five hundred, and then start at ninety-five.
And that, and starting at ninety-five is based on?
Experience.
There's, I, I still have reservations, so one part that wasn't advantaged last time is she had a controller already, that's not present this time, she's so.
No, she did not.
I wasn't hired all after, she was hired, she hired me.
Because she couldn't do that part of the job.
Yeah.
That's not true.
Well.
It was a recommendation by Tom Sauber that that happened, and that happened long before, um, she was ever made administrator, so you can reset that.
It was, it was also recommended by, uh, Bergman, the administrator as well.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, so this, so you're suggesting, uh, starting at ninety-five and then twenty-five hundred for the, uh, potential, um, increases after, uh, six and twelve months.
That's correct.
So the top would be a hundred.
Yep.
And that's within the range that we had set.
Yep.
Is there any, any further discussion on that?
I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of going up to ninety-five to start.
Neither am I.
This is, this is in the.
But I don't wanna have a two-two vote.
Well.
But it's also, this is the, the baseline for negotiations, um, with that. That's why I'm, I'm not in favor of starting at ninety-five, this is a starting point. The starting point shouldn't be in the middle of the range just because you're already giving half the farm away in that case. The starting point, and it needs to be lower just to start, those are all items that are negotiable.
Can you be more specific on giving the farm away?
So, if, if this is what your total range is, you're not gonna walk in to a negotiation and already be halfway or at your maximum of what you're able to do. Your, your starting point needs to be lower, it's a negotiation. You're gonna come to somewhere usually for a compromise somewhere in the middle area, but you're not gonna start in the middle. That's why I'm not, uh, in remotely in favor of starting in the middle to begin with, that's not even good negotiating.
We just did that with our airport administrator, or airport manager, started in the middle.
But in this one, in this case, I don't, I don't believe that, not with the increases that, um, that had the possibility of being there. The whole contract's negotiable, so I don't, I don't agree with starting in the middle of that range right off the top.
I can understand that point.
Yeah, I do too, I, I, I like the fact that, um, that the, uh, the employee, the potential employee who you'd be negotiating with actually can do that negotiation rather than us doing that negotiation here, so. Okay, so, uh, do we need to take a vote on leaving it at ninety-three or making it ninety-five?
I'll be okay with it.
Leave it at ninety-three?
I'm okay with it, if that's, if that's, if that's the will of the board, then I'm willing to bend.
Okay.
So, um, after, so we're looking at ninety-three initially, um, and then are we okay with the three and three then? Okay.
Cause it's up to, it is not guaranteed.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep, I see that.
The whole thing will not exceed a hundred, so even if that number changes, those, those increments, exactly.
Okay.
Now, be, sorry, one last thing, did we talk about one oh five? I remember, uh, Commissioner Van Genhoven, you and I talking about one oh five, I can't remember, we didn't vote on that, hey?
It was ninety to a hundred.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
The other part of this, we need to be clear, is that we're removing the number, that the total after, you know, one, that we're removing that because we don't know what that number would be, so it just says final salary.
Yep, yep, that's good, yep.
All right, so that would be s, page three.
Okay, so, um, I'll seek a motion to approve page three as amended.
Support, oops, sorry.
Oh, so moved.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, support by Commissioner Williams. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, moving on to page four.
Uh, let's see, so on page four, you guys, it looks like Personnel had struck item B, um, which defined the sal, it was basically a repeat of, um, what was there originally, so. Uh, let's see, and then D, any future general wage increases uniformly awarded to non-union employees will be applied to the employee's salary.
I didn't strike that, so that must have been something from Finance.
Any future general?
Yes, we struck it, um, cause in, uh, subsection B, the last sentence says, final salary will remain eligible for board-approved, non-union cost of living increases each year of, of this contract.
So it was redundant.
It was redundant.
It was redundant.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, and then we, under benefits, we had, um, lowered the vacation eligibility from you, it looks like Personnel had lowered it from twenty to fifteen. And, yeah, and I think that, that was it, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that lowering?
Yeah.
And the reason that the Personnel Committee decided to do this, uh, for transparency sake is that our department heads, um, start at ten, uh, vacation days, and we're trying to kind of bridge the gap between our administrator and our employees so that we have more room to work with, um, so.
A little history on the days where they were up substantially higher in previous contracts. That goes back several administrators ago where the administrator, um, in renegotiating the contract asks for additional vacation days in lieu of an actual pay raise.
And then it just got carried forward.
And it got carried forward, so this puts it back down where it typically would have been.
Yep, yep, okay, um, and then we just have some formatting changes.
Yeah, the rest of it was, uh, formatting changes, uh, using structured format, so.
All right, any other discussion on page four? We'll entertain a motion to accept page four as amended.
A move that we accept page four as amended.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Jensen, support by Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, moving on to page five.
Okay, so. Uh, let's see, the top of the page, the, um, change here is just clarifying, um, language because the language is a little confusing when it says considered days worked to accrued based on days worked. So it's just a language, little language change there. And then eliminating, um, it looks like the Personnel.
Yep.
Um, eliminated the payout advance.
Yep, that's something that's been updated in, uh, Personnel Policies too, so, we just took that out.
Okay, so then, uh, so then the Finance Committee, um, uh, made the change under hospitalization and medical coverage, last item. Right now, or in the contract, it had the current monthly amount, and it had it actually, the number specified that if an employee doesn't take the health benefit, they are, um, uh, compensated for that savings. Um, instead of having the actual number in there, we were suggesting removing that so that when that number changes, you don't have to change a contract.
Okay.
So, it doesn't change the benefit, but it just clears up having to go back into the contract.
Yeah, this was something that had been taken out of our current administrator's contract, but was in every prior administrator's contract. So, we did put it back in, but I can totally see taking it out, that's fine.
Okay, and that would be it.
It, okay, any other discussion on page five? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So move.
I'll support it, so we have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, support by Commissioner Van Genhoven, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, moving on to page six.
So page six has a lot of formatting changes, um, but only one, um, change that, uh, a word was missing that just got added back in, and it's under, um, mileage allowance, and it says this allowance will be taxed as income, for some reason that will got removed, so it's just adding that back in.
That was probably my typing error, I apologize.
Yeah.
Um, and then we do have the addition of J, computation of benefits, or are we striking?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, yeah, that's up there.
That was from Personnel, that wasn't added.
Okay, so computation of benefits, all hours paid to the employee shall be considered as hours worked for the purpose of computing any of the benefits under this agreement, and you added that?
I simply added it because it was all in all prior contracts.
Okay, so it just somehow wasn't in this one?
Right.
And this is just how we're, how we, um, uh, calculate, uh, benefits. It's based on hours that are worked?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so nothing, there's nothing, uh-
Are you, you're okay with, everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion on page six? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Move approval.
I'll support. We have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, support by Commissioner Van Genhoven. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Page seven.
Uh, looks like page seven, there's only one, um, update, and it just changes the word "claim" to "claims." Um, it's just, uh, under indemnification. So liability claims, so it's not a singular.
I'll move that we accept page seven as amended.
Good.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Jensen, a support by Commissioner Johnson to approve page seven as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other discussion? Sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to page eight.
Performance evaluation. Uh, let's see, it looks like, uh, the board shall review and evaluate the performance of employees' interim period. So interim period in writing-
Within 90?
And it says within 90 days.
I'm not okay with that. I would like, I would like 60.
Well, it was 30.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think what I, what, where I was coming from is, um, are we gonna do three evaluations-
Okay.
-in a period of 12 months?
So let me ask you this. It, this is, okay, in our prior administrator's contract, it said 30 days, and that was so that- Because it says the board and employee shall define such goals and performance objectives that they determine necessary for the proper operation of the county and the attainment. Is that at the, the 90-day mark, or is that immediately? Because I want to make sure that we're able to have those discussions with her as soon as possible and not wait to 90 days or even 60 days to define those goals and objectives. What do, how do we feel about that as a board? Because how are we supposed to review and eval- and evaluate the performance of an employee's interim period if we don't give her the goals and objectives to accomplish in that 90-day period?
Could I make a next suggestion of having a committee of the whole where you can compile all your goals and such, and then bring those, and it wouldn't be an evaluation?
That's more what, I, I just, I feel like we're saying that we're gonna evaluate someone three times. We're gonna evaluate them at six months, 12 months, and now we're saying at 60 days, you know, 90 days, three months. Um, so three months, six months, and 12 months.
Yeah, I get it. It's a lot of evaluation.
Yeah.
Right, and is it an evaluation that you're performing, or is it, are you giving-
It's like goal setting.
These are my strat, you know, my long-term goals.
I know, that's-
Yeah, okay, so-
Yeah, so I think what you were just, um, sort of, your, the, the idea that's in your head is that you're setting goals and you're setting performance objectives, but that's not really an evaluation.
That's correct.
And so I would be okay with that happening at 30 days, but this says evaluation.
Yeah, this is specific section seven, performance evaluation. Okay, yep. Great. So, so we want, so do you want a 90, a six-month in a year?
I would, I would say six months would be better.
Okay.
And then what we can do, we don't even have to have it in the contract. We can have a committee of the whole to set goals and obje- objectives, and it doesn't need to be in a contract.
Well, then we could actually strike this section because it's already written in, I don't know, we can't-
No, 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 no.
No, because her, the merit-based evaluations are already being done at six months and 12 months.
But that's specifically around salary. This is, we will be doing performance evaluations annually, so this does need to be in there.
Correct, okay.
But I do, I like the, I like Ashley's suggestion that we just change this to, um, six months, that, and it's during that first evali- it's that first evaluation.
So in the evaluation part at six months, I completely agree. Setting the, the goals and objectives with them, like, even in a committee of the whole, that would probably do better going down into section eight, and in the other terms and conditions, the appointment-
I agree.
Cause that's where we're setting those. It's not an evaluation, but that has to happen within 30 days from this body.
Yep. Okay, so do we want to change it from 90 days to, um, what is, six months? Hundred and eighty?
Hundred and eighty.
Okay, so what we would do, this first one would become 180 days, and then we would take, um, the board and employee shall define such goals and performance objectives that they determine necessary for the proper operation of the county and the board's policy objectives. That would go down under other terms and conditions? Is that just-
The evaluation would still be there.
Evaluation would stay in A.
Yes.
What I'm asking is, are we saying that B would go down under other terms and conditions of employment?
Yes, but that's where that also has to have the 30-day one.
Right, that's, yeah.
With it, okay, so we would just add at the end of it within 30 days?
Yes.
Okay, so then the next section, I want to make sure that we have our evaluation set correctly here. So then the next thing, which is C, if we did that, um, we would strike the words "shall further" because that's indicating that there's something above it.
Mm-hmm.
So we should, we would strike the word "shall further," so it would say the board and the employee establish a relative priority among, and there was a G missing there, among those various goals and obje- see, see, all the rest of it is referencing B. So if we move B, we are completely changing this.
I'm okay if we just leave it at, under the performance evaluation-
Okay.
-tool or section, and then, but then have, but just reword it, as we've been doing.
So what we would do is leave it as is. We change 180 at the, in the, in A, but in B, we add thir- within 30 days.
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Oh, I forgot to capitalize "board."
Yes, and I, yep, that's okay. 30 days. Okay, so, um, A is 180 days, and then the board and employee shall, uh, define such, shall define goals, and I will strike the word "such." I'll just, um, put, uh, "shall define goals and performance objectives that they determine blah, blah, blah" within 30 days after signing this contract. Basically the same that says up above.
Yep.
Is that okay?
I'm fine.
Okay. Uh, and then we, yeah, capitalizing "board."
And then the rest is just formatting.
And the rest is all formatting. Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to approve page eight as amended.
Some moved?
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, support by Commissioner Jensen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to page nine.
So I think page nine is pretty easy here. We just had, um, under section 10, general provisions, um, item C, there was a lot of references to "at-will" over and over, and so it's just cleaning up some of that. I don't think that anything changes, um, but it's, you just want to take a look at it. It's just eliminating, I think it says it three, three or four times. So just make sure it reads right.
Okay, notwithstanding anything in this agreement, the employee and the employer understand and agree that the employee is an "at-will" employee? Is that supposed to stay in there, the employee?
Yep.
Yep. And that the employee may resign, or the employer may terminate the employee's employment at any time and for any or for no reason. Nothing in this agreement, agreement shall be construed to alter the "at-will" nature of the employee's employment. I think that's fine.
And then, uh, removing "and" between signed and original. That's it. And then the title down in the, um, item F or whatever it'll be, administrator control, it really just should say employee to be consistent with the rest of the contract.
Okay.
That's it on that page.
I'll entertain a motion to accept page nine as amended.
Some moved?
Support.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, support by Commissioner Williams. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Last page, page 10.
Yeah, so the last page is just a little bit of a, um, um, making sure that we are adding, um, not just documents that have to be returned at the, at, um-
Oba property.
Termination of employment, but it would be changing the word "documents" to "property," and that would include anything that's keys, uh, technology, like if we've checked out laptops and, you know, um, other devices, phones, whatever. It's just, uh, making sure we get all property back and not just documents.
Okay.
And it looks like you guys struck, it looks like the Personnel Committee struck previous agreements.
Yeah.
And that was it.
I'll move to accept page 10, uh, with the amend, uh, amendments in it.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Jensen, support by Commissioner Johnson to approve as amended. All those, or any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we have a contract. Eight. Any other discussion on this? Okay, um, moving on to number two, appointment of negotiating team. Uh, I, I asked for this to be on the agenda because, um, we have, uh, we have normally our, uh, chair, who would be the negotiator of this contract with our administrator. Are we entertaining keeping it that way?
Uh, so if we have a negotiating team, what, what is the idea behind who, who would be serving on this team?
I was gonna say, well, for the other contracts that we had done, um, for positions like the airport, it was the chair, the chair of the Finance and Chair Personnel Committees.
Okay.
The precedent in this case, so is the chair had been previously the one that had, had done it. So if we're gonna put a team together, um, it, it's either the two or the three, I would think. I, the other one you run into is-
It can't be the three.
Exactly, exactly. And that's where I was going.
So you and I are negotiating committee for union contracts?
Yep.
But this is different.
Um, so who's Chair of Personnel? And, and your Chair of Finance?
Correct.
But it would typically be our chair who handled this negotiating.
Is our, uh, is our chair available? So-
Yeah.
If we look at it like we look at how we do committee assignments, it would just be a chair-based decision, and he would, uh, pick whom he thought was the appropriate person to negotiate with. Or, um, we can decide between us four, us five, four and a half.
Yeah. Well, he can give his recommendations.
Yeah, he can give, yeah.
John, are you there? Can you hear it? Can you unmute yourself?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, um, we're just, we're just talking about the, uh, negotiating team for the contract. What do you, what do you feel? What, how do you want to handle it?
How much, I mean, I don't want- Why don't we try, who's, I know, uh, Matt is the Chair of the Finance, right?
Yep.
And Personnel Chair?
Me.
So Matt and I are already on the negotiating committee for union contracts, but ti- but typically, this would be your job to do this, uh, negotiating with the administrator.
Well, I'll, I'll put it this way. Uh, you trust me to do the negotiation.
Well, you're our chair.
We voted you.
We've, we-
Yeah.
Do you want to do it by yourself, or do you want to have someone come in with you? Because-
I'd like to have at least one person sit in just because it's, uh, that we were covered. He said, she said, then?
Well, I mean, we, we could have legal representation, um, with our prosecutor there.
That would be great. That way it's, uh, you know, you can't say he said, she said, then.
Well, con- considering that Personnel and Finance worked on this contract, would you like to have one commissioner who's been on there that's done the groundwork on it, or do you just want it to be you and Lauren or Beth? Because we don't know what Lauren's schedule is. Lauren had told us previously that she was tied up all the month of June with trials.
Okay, how about if me and Chris, uh, does it, anybody got a problem with that?
Who?
He said-
With Chris.
Me and him.
That would be fine.
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Okay.
Work with that.
You okay with that?
I am, yep.
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 Yeah. Okay. Okay, so the negotiating team for the contract will be, uh, our Board Chair, John Melner, and Christine Williams from Finance. Need a motion for that?
Yeah, I think we do.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll be accepting a team.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Van Genhoven, support by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, well, moving on to general public comment.
Before we get to that, um, did I see minutes that were in our packet?
Oh, yeah, they're right here. Yes. These?
Yep.
Oh!
Should we approve those? Okay.
They're for the next meeting. I just put them in there for reference.
Oh, all right, all right.
Yeah, they were both committees.
Okay, so moving on to general public comment, at this time, you can take the podium, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to discuss any topic of your choosing.
Bob Barron. It appears that you're changing the, uh, contract is to try and protect the board from a lack of ethical and professional standards of your applicants you're ki- uh, working on a contract for. This is an admission of a problem with applicant. You need to start over. Quote from Abraham Lincoln, "Troop patriotism is better than the wrong kind of piety."
Any other public comment?
And I looked, and there is none on remote.
Welcome, please state your name for the record.
Bonnie Hakalai Escanaba. Commissioners, your decisions regarding the rehiring of Emily DeSalvo make me question your understanding of your position because you are using poor discernment in assessing the qualifications of candidates for the position of county administrator. Before she was fired, Emily willfully did not pay county bills that were due. That was her job to pay the county bills. She did not have discretion to decide which bills to pay and when to pay them. When asked by board members for information about this matter, she said she did not have any information to share with them. That was her job to provide information to the board. Emily told the board that she would not communicate with them verbally, that she would have to e- that they would have to email or do written communications. That is insubordination. Communication is a necessity for a county administrator. That was her job to communicate with the board. Are you willing to have roadblocks put in, in the future if she again decides to do similar actions? It was also necessary to hire a helper for Emily so that she could do the accounting functions of her job. That shows that she lacks the skills necessary to do that aspect of her job. Will Emily require another helper? A Republican form of government requires that you take direction from the people that you serve as a public servant. You are public servants. I don't see where you have asked the people what they think of DeSalvo being rehired after she walked away with a large sum of money, after she quit her job. Yes, in my view, she quit because no one could talk to their bosses in that manner and expect to retain their job. In my view, she should have to return that severance pay to be considered for any job, as I understand, almost $83,000. That's a lot of money. She couldn't do her job. She was insubordinate, and she was fired. She also was a direct supervisor to Andrea Numalinen, who was responsible for the Delta County Airport almost closing, another black spot on both DeSalvo and Numalinen's work records. work records. Black spot. A Republican form of government requires that you address the people's grievances via redress of grievances. So here are my grievances. A new search should be conducted for a proper candidate for the county administrator position immediately. You and other commissioners are making poor decisions in attempting to hire unqualified and possibly contentious people for the job at hand. You and other commissioners, all of you commissioners, are wastefully spending Delta County money, which is taxpayer money, by attempting to hire someone who has demonstrated that they need a helper. Reading the contract you are negotiating, you are offering a large sum of money to someone who appears unqualified or at best a poor candidate for this job.
Thank you.
Please redress my grievances.
Is there any other public comment?
Ms. Chair, you're, uh, you excuse, uh, our administrator?
Yeah, I'll excuse our administrator so she can go to another meeting. Matt, can you take that?
Sure. What's the, um...
Push three.
Three? And then play. Correct?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Semadit Escanaba. First, I would like to thank...
Semadit, just one moment, please. Okay, go ahead, apologies.
Semadit Escanaba. Uh, I would like to thank to you all, uh, for working on the negotiation package, uh, especially Commissioner Williams did lots of work, looks like, and cleared up some wording. That's good. Uh, but on the other side, I wish we could have more, uh, options who can do this work best. I was here at, I think that was February eleventh, and I heard Emily's talk, Emily DeSalvo's talk. That was very hateful. I couldn't believe it. I was shocked. And it's not ethical, uh, behavior, so I wish we could have more, uh, nominated people or just, uh, coming for this job, willing to do that, and you could have more options to choose from. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Just one moment, please, while we reset the clock. Okay.
Hi, Lisa Paczinski. Um, I have to say, this is my first meeting that I've ever attended, so this is very, um, enlightening and educational. Um, I appreciate all the time that you've put into, um, evaluating, um, the applicants and looking at changing the contract. Um, I would hope that, moving forward with negotiations, that you would continue to, um, make some financial decisions that would keep the salary level, um, because I do feel this particular candidate is chosen because you really didn't have any other choice. The other applicants, from what I understand, withdrew, um, didn't show up for an interview, and, you know, or were not qualified. So, I would ask that in consideration, as you negotiate this contract, that it maintain a lower level of salary and benefits, that you don't over-negotiate and allow this particular applicant to be overcompensated, in my mind. Um, and if, if it were to come to that, that you would just not allow that person to agree to a contract and seek another applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Welcome. Let me pull out our phones.
Give the old-fashioned one.
Oh, there we go.
Here we go. Thank you for your service, Commissioners. I'm Barbara Barron Gladstone. You've heard from, uh, a few people here. These people represent many people in the community. You've heard these people talk against your hiring of Emily DeSalvo. There's nobody here that has talked in favor of your hiring, and I hope that you will serve the people that you are hearing here today that also are representing many voices in the community.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Commissioner Williams, is there any public comment online or on phone?
There wasn't before. I'll check real quick. No.
Okay. Last call, general public comment. Okay, public comment is now closed. Commissioner comments?
I defer.
Christine?
I just would like to say that we have a new parks manager starting tomorrow morning. So, uh, we have, uh, one employ, new employee coming in that I'm excited about, um, having our parks manager, who is currently in the position until Friday, so they're gonna overlap , uh, three days, which I think is great, but she starts tomorrow morning.
For myself, I would just like to thank the finance committee, and then the personnel committee, and also our clerk and our administrator for all their help, uh, working this contract from start to now, um, negotiating with our new administrator. Um, it's been a, a very smooth process, and again, I just wanted to thank Clerk Persarki for her expertise regarding this, and also our past administrator, who was very forthcoming with any questions that we had regarding her contract that was put in place, and that's all I have.
Um, one of them, yeah, thank you both, the personnel. I think that went really well upfront, um, and then, of course, Chris on the finance committee did a lot of additional like work, um, helping clear stuff up, make it ADA compliant. Um, those formatting changes will make it huge when we get ready to put it on the website, and not just because we're required by law to have it there, um, and make it ADA compliant, but this is that, that transition we talked about earlier. Um, again, thank you to everybody that helped in there, um, in the process of cleaning up what was there. I think it's, uh, again, it's the beginning of a contract. It's not a contract yet. It's, uh, it's a stepping stone for the negotiation, so, um, that would be a big part. One I wanted to let everybody know, um, the, we had a very large joint meeting yesterday with the UP State Fair Authority, um, our emergency manager, and then when I say all other stakeholders in the county, it's not, um, an exaggeration as Commissioner Van Genhoven would, would attest, the amount of people there. If there was somebody in law enforcement or emergency service, they were in that room. And part of that whole planning process, and this was the second, we will have another, is to identify potential risks and how we can mitigate those, and if something were to happen, whether it's a ride break, it's, and somebody's injured, injured by an animal, something man-made, or something else within nature, that we could have a coordinated response to be able to best help those individuals. And there's already groups within the county that help do that, but this ties them all together. So, the second one was actually bringing the other pieces that we identified in the first one together, which was yesterday's, and there'll be one more that should solidify the rest of those pieces, um, to help with, with, um, just safety and security, and if something happens, um, how we take care of it.
Nancy?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, um, moving on to the meeting's schedule.
No, I did have.
I'm sorry, I defer, Matt. Go ahead. I apologize on that.
No, um, I was reminded of, the administrator and I met with Michigan Works yesterday, and we discussed the, um, possible, um, changing of our rental agreement, and they suggested, uh, if we do relocate, um, nine-one-one, that there's also, instead of the room in this corner over here, they call it the file room, they also suggested a room off of, over in this section over here.
Yep.
Which would be closer to kitchen, so, um, we're gonna work with IT and figure out, um, if that's a better solution with, uh, smaller runs. And then we also talked about, um, splitting the rent of this room rather than Michigan Works paying for it, and, um, it being under county control as far as the calendar goes, rather than Michigan Works' control.
That'd be great.
That is all.
Okay, awesome. Uh, moving on to our meeting's schedule, there's a regular Board of Commissioners meeting on six seventeen twenty-five at five fifteen in the Service Center boardroom, a regular Board of Commissioners meeting on seven one twenty-five at five fifteen in the Service Center boardroom, and a regular meeting of, uh, excuse me, a regular Board of Commissioners meeting on seven fifteen twenty-five at five fifteen PM in the Service Center boardroom. Of course, we'll keep everyone up to dates if we're looking at any other committee of the wholes or special or additional meetings, but beyond that, I, uh, we have no thirty-day notice of appointments, and I would be seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor, leave.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.